Let's please take our seats.
Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Dr. Jerry Anderson of New Macedonia Baptist Church in Riverdale, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let us bow his. Our Father in Heaven, tonight we come honored, first of all, for allowing us to come together one more time. We thank you for this opportunity to be in this commission meeting. We pray for our Chairman and the Commissioners. We pray for all those, God, who are under the sound of my voice. We pray for each person that's here tonight. We ask, Father, in the name of Jesus, for the manifestation of your power and your healing upon each and every one of us. We ask though, God, that you would show favor and grace in this meeting tonight. Give us your wisdom and knowledge, your understanding, as each one come and have conversation. We pray tonight, Father, that you will allow your angels, your ministry angels, and your Holy Spirit to take control. And, Father, use us for your glory, that you may be glorified in everything that we say and do tonight. We thank you now for this opportunity, and we ask, God, for your blessing again upon each person in this building, in this place. We pray for community at large, we pray for law enforcement everywhere. We pray, God, that your mercy and your grace will be upon opposed. And for that, Father, we say thank you. Now, God, we give you praise and we give you glory, in Christ's name, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the October seventeen, two thousand seventeen, regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Did we want to add the resolution?
Who added this? This Resolution Seventy-two?
This came from Legal. I was just checking the agenda, see if you need to add it.
We do. According to the email that we received, we need to add it.
Yes, that Resolutions twenty seventeen seventy-two is recommending that you add this as an emergency item to extend the due diligence period for Highwoods Realty Limited Partnership to conduct due diligence.
Okay, and I'm assuming it's an emergency because it will expire before the next meeting?
That's correct.
All right, well, I'll place that in the form of a motion to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash seventy-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Those a favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing now, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
Is there a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those a favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Approval of the October third, two thousand seventeen, regular business meeting minutes.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Probably moving the second, those a favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now present four proclamations. The first proclamation recognizes the Grassroots Leadership Institute, class of two thousand seventeen, as presented by Chairman Turner. Is Ms. Seerlis Hathaway-Williams present, along with the graduating class? And if the Commissioners could please join them for the presentation of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes the Grassroots Leadership Institute, class of two thousand seventeen. Whereas Clayton County is proud to honor fourteen graduating students of the two thousand seventeen Clayton County Grassroots Leadership Institute: Eric Bell, Ingrid Benjamin, Jasmine Bowles, Keisha Dapney, Marquista Darling, Regina Deloach, Chris Favors, Victoria Howell, Angela John-Luise, Timothy Kenny, Patty Mosley, Wendy Peters, Natika Wilson, and Clarissa Winston. And whereas, as part of the thirteen-week curriculum developed by the J.W. Fanning Institute for Leadership, various community leaders were brought in to instruct students on leadership development, the building of communities through collaborations, effective communication, understanding and valuing diversity, group dynamics, conflict resolution, how to conduct a successful meeting, and economic development. And whereas, the mission since two thousand five of the Grassroots Leadership Institute is to identify, train, and nurture emerging leaders to better serve the needs of the Clayton County community. G R L I's purpose is to prepare a generation of leaders to meet future community challenges. And whereas, the students are assigned the task of developing and implementing community service-related events as part of their participation. The initiative, created by the Fall Cohort of two thousand seventeen, is called a Teacher Appreciation Station, TPA. The objective was to lighten the burden on teachers who often finance their classrooms and students with essentials that are crucial to their learning and overall success. By providing our teachers with the necessary supplies and tools needed to perform, it will help foster an atmosphere where students are prepared to be productive learners and providing teachers with the means to effectively instruct their classrooms. This initiative will support the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen academic school year for our Clayton County school system. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners congratulates the Grassroots Leadership Institute, class of two thousand seventeen, for taking the lead in addressing key issues in the community that will truly benefit all residents of Clayton County. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby support and proudly acknowledge the two thousand seventeen graduating class of the Clayton County Grassroots Leadership Institute for a job well done. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventeenth day of October and the year two thousand seventeen, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. And the next proclamation recognizes Women's Day at the Commission, as presented by Vice Chairman Edmanson.
And let me say this before we start. Excuse me, excuse me, everyone. Let me say this before we start. Just want to recognize our illustrious Mayor Edmondson. And our board members, Jessica Redding, they're all we see. But all these women are truly phenomenal women.
Clayton County recognizes Women's Day at the Commission. Whereas, Women's Day at the Commission is an opportunity for women to come together and gain knowledge regarding their county Commissioners. And whereas, it is important for women to educate themselves on all levels of government, city, county, state, and federal. And whereas, Women's Day at the Commission is an opportunity to discuss important county issues and how to work with county officials and departments. And whereas, Women's Day at the Commission is an organization encouraging informed and active participation in government. This knowledge will help to influence public policy through education and advocacy. And whereas, ratified on August eighteenth, nineteen twenty, the Nineteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution granted American women the right to vote. At the time the U.S. was founded, its female citizens did not share all of the same rights as men, including the right to vote. And whereas, since that time, we have seen more and more women being elected to public office. Women are leading in all levels of government and breaking the glass ceiling. And therefore, I, Michael L. Edmanson, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim and recognize Women's Day at the Commission and encourage the citizens of Clayton County and the state of Georgia to join me in expressing to them our most sincere thanks and appreciation for efforts and sacrifices for Clayton County. And witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventeenth day of October and the year two thousand seventeen, Michael L. Edmanson, Vice Chairman. And the next proclamation. Clayton County recognizes October two thousand seventeen as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as presented by Commissioner Gregory.
I know we're having a lot of fun here tonight, but just for a minute, we've got to get serious about a very serious issue that affects mostly women in the community. We've got some brave women here tonight, and I'd like for them to come up, please. We have some members of the Thriving and Surviving Support Group. Would you come up? Ms. Hong Fan, and while she's coming up, Ms. Fan and I, we met when we both were going through cancer, well, different cancers, and we became sisters. And, um, cancer is ugly in any form. Any kind of cancer is ugly. And so tonight, again, as we rec-- as this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we just want to recognize these brave women. If you had a loved one or anybody ever gone through some of the things they've been through, you would know that these are some of the strongest women you could ever find.
Clayton County recognizes National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, two thousand seventeen. Whereas, too many precious lives are interrupted or cut short by cancer. Breast cancer, one of the most common cancers among American women, affects roughly two hundred thirty thousand women as well as two thousand three hundred men annually. This disease is responsible for more than forty thousand deaths annually in the United States. And whereas, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection through mammography and self-examination. Mammography, an X-ray of the breast, is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas, breast cancer does not discriminate, but it strikes people of all races, ages, and income levels. We must raise awareness of this disease and its symptoms so we can more easily identify it and treat it more effectively. And whereas, researchers, scientists, nonprofit organizations, and breast cancer survivors are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause and support those who are working towards a cure. And whereas, together, we must ensure all people can enjoy the special gift that of a long, happy, and healthy life. During National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, let us remember those who cancer took from us too soon, their families, friends, and our medical professionals. And whereas, Clayton County recognizes the tenacious women in our county and surrounding areas who are either currently in the fight and those who are survivors. We salute their strength to endure some of the most uncomfortable treatments, such as chemotherapy, radiation, and surgery. The world has watched you fight your battle. The world has never seen anyone so courageous. You never let cancer define who you are. You live every day as if it's your last. You make every single moment count. You're our heroes. Now, therefore, I, Sona Singleton Gregory, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby acknowledge Clayton County's recognition of October two thousand seventeen as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I encourage all citizens, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer. I urge everyone to salute the brave soldiers in this fight. And witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventeenth day of October and the year two thousand seventeen, Sona Singleton Gregory, Commissioner. And the last proclamation for this evening. Clayton County recognizes Dr. Gary T. Anderson, Pastor of the New Macedonia Baptist Church in Riverdale, Georgia, as presented by Commissioner Franklin Warner.
May I present the man?
Clayton County recognizes Dr. Gary T. Anderson. Whereas, Dr. Gary T. Anderson has served as the pastor of the New Macedonia Baptist Church in Riverdale, Georgia, since nineteen eighty-seven. Under his leadership, membership has grown by leaps and bounds. And whereas, Dr. Anderson was a member of Chapel First Baptist Church in Scottsdale, Georgia, where he served humbly as Junior Deacon and was a choir member. In nineteen eighty-one, Dr. Anderson was licensed and ordained as a minister at Little Vine Baptist Church in Tyrone, Georgia, under the leadership of Pastor H.H. Dyer. And whereas, while answering a higher calling, Reverend Anderson continued to serve and learn from Pastor Dyer at various ministries throughout the state of Georgia. In June nineteen eighty-seven, Dr. Gary T. Anderson was called to the pastorate of the New Macedonia Baptist Church, wherein he have labored faithfully for thirty years. And whereas, Pastor Anderson received a Bachelor of Arts degree from Beulah Heights University and later earned a Master's Degree in Theology from Andersonville Baptist Seminary of Religion. He is currently pursuing a doctoral degree in theology. Pastor Anderson was awarded the Honorary Doctorate of Divinity degree by the American Bible University. Pastor Anderson serves as a member of the Association of Christian Ministries, ACM, of Clayton County, and is a lifetime member of the N double A C P. And whereas, Dr. Gary T. Anderson is an outstanding pastor, husband to First Lady Vanessa Anderson for thirty-seven years, father to Rochelle Cowan Quinn. He is an excellent role model and pillar to his congregation and community. Now, therefore, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing Dr. Gary T. Anderson for his pastoral leadership and community activism. And witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventeenth day of October and the year two thousand seventeen, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner. The board will now consider the request of Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Mrs. Rogers, please take them together unless a board member likes a single one out. Hearing now, please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Oh, wait, one second. Excuse me. There's one for equipment. Number four. Can we take out some stuff?
Take number four separately, please.
Number four, okay, all right. I have three items to present at this point. The first one is the monthly report of contracts, contract modifications and change orders authorized by myself, Director of Central Services, or the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Stanford. The first items I have was actually executed by myself, the first five. On August the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, we unexecuted a written contract in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars with Green Demolition Circle LLC, located in Atlanta, Georgia, for demolition, removal, and disposal of the million-gallon elevated water tank. This was an RFB seventeen dash zero one, and it was in the amount, once again, of thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. Next item was to ser-- was a service order agreement in the amount of two thousand seven hundred seventy dol-- seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents with Comcast for charges for the Clayton County housing and community. Next item for-- was also a service order agreement for two thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents with Comcast for charges at the Clayton County Police Department at Forest Park. The next item was executed on September the twenty-second, and this was a written contract amendment with the store, with the Sign Store Online, Inc., to revise the scope of services to contract for RFP seventeen dash sixty-two, which is the digital message display board and electronic scoreboards for Clayton County, Georgia. The next item was executed on September the twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, which is a sole-source contract in the amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eight cents with LexisNexis Risk Solutions, and this was for the law enforcement subscription. And the next three items was actually executed by our COO on September the eighth, two thousand seventeen. There was a written contract in the amount of fifty-five thousand six hundred ninety dollars and ninety-six cents with Prime Contract, the Inc., for the exterior painting for the Clayton County Library Headquarters Building. This was with a statewide contract in the number of seventeen dash one fifty-three. Next, on September the thirteenth, there was a contract for Project seventeen dash one fifty-seven, and this was purchased in the amount of seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars through a government purchase. And this is for the Insight Public Sector, Inc., and this is for Panasonic Tough Books. This is a part of the AVL project. And the last item for the monthly report is on September the twenty-ninth. A written contract amendment in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars with Superior LLC to add additional scope of work for the police and fire for the CAD project was executed with Superior. My request for the report is for you to approve the report concerning these expenses. Next item is recommendation for award of ITB seventeen dash fifteen, that is for the million of various streets in Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award to the responsive and responsible bidder, meet the specifications, which is Atlanta Pavement and Concrete Construction, Inc., located in Norcross, Georgia. Funding is available through the two thousand nine and two thousand fifteen Spots programs. And the last item is recommendation for award of RFP seventeen one twenty-seven, which is home-delivered meals for Clayton County, Georgia, for the Senior Service Department. The recommendation is to award to the lowest responsive and responsible proponent, meet the specifications. This is Open Hand Atlanta, located in Atlanta, Georgia, and funding is available through the Atlanta Regional Commission Grant. My recommendation is a request for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budgets accordingly.
Is there a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing now, those a favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay. And the last item is recommendation for special purchase of seventeen one eighty-nine, which is Tyler Intergov Parks and Recreation Modules and Implementation Services. The recommendation is for a special purchase to Tyler, for the soft-- for the Tyler Park and Recreation software from Tyler Technologies, located in Yarmouth, Maine, in the amount of one million four hundred twenty-one thousand ninety-two dollars. This software will be utilized by the following departments: Community Development, Parks and Recreation, the Senior Service Department, and Code Enforcement, as part of the Enterprise Resource Planning Project, which is the ERP. Funding is available through the two thousand fifteen Spots ERP Project Fund. I request for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman and his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yes, there's questions.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Is Jason here? He's not here. Okay. Mr. COO?
He's here.
Oh, he is here? Okay, I'm sorry.
Please take the podium.
And Mr. COO, I believe. I have a question. Previously, on the agenda, there were some changes dealing with technology. And I had asked previously then, asked then, rather, were these changes going to be in, how do I say, in tangent with what we're already doing, number one? And how do we ensure that what we're purchasing is going to be operable for what we need to use it for? The reason I, you know why I'm asking that? Because we, a couple meetings, it was about a couple of months ago, we purchased a whole bunch of equipment. And at that time, I asked about that equipment we were purchasing and about the programs we were purchasing. And then we had on the agenda that we found out it didn't work for what we thought it would be utilized for, and we had to turn around and purchase another program. So what I'm trying to ask is, who is ensuring that our purchases are in line with what we're really going to need to utilize these programs for? And who are we consulting? Is it just the directors making the decisions? Or are we really talking to the end-users?
Yes, ma'am, so a couple of things. As it pertains to who we vet the requests through, we actually talk to the consultants, we talk to some of the best practices within the industry. And we try to ensure through the ERP system, as we onboard into new technology, one of our primary reasons is ensure there's the interface of the software throughout entire systems. Part of our primary challenges with our technology right now is very siloed. When we're trying to talk with finance or try to talk to HR, we have these standalone software packages, and they're not talking to one another. So one of our primary reasons is ensure that the technology is, one, is more seamless, and we ensure that ultimately, there's better synergy in the software. As it pertains to the vetting, what Mr. Brookins have done along with the Executive Committee, in some instances, we have a technology executive committee that we try to vet through with our consultant, along with the CFO's office, and a lot of the, and of course, my office. And so what we try to do is ensure that, we kind of ensure that moving forward the next five or ten years, we're not getting dated technology. And again, you know, technology changes every day. But the reality of it is, is we're trying to ensure that the money that we're spending certainly will have some synergy with the overall purchasing of that software.
Okay.
The other part of that is that I think is important, as you talked about, the department heads. We try to ensure that there's a demo with the software before we actually go forward with the actual execution of the contract. And so, in most instances, we've had the department heads involved in the discussion to ensure that, and I'm being honest with you, in some instances, it's not, it doesn't give them all the bells and whistles, but it will certainly meet the primary needs of the departments. But our primary goal, again, is to talk about interface with our support departments, being finance and HR and central services.
Okay. Thank you so very much for that answer. The reason I'm asking this question, though, is because one of the things that I have been doing as your commissioner is not just listening to the directors, but I actually go around to the departments and find out what they do, how they do it. And I find that quite often, we're making decisions as department heads, but we're not the ones that are using these items on a regular basis. So at the end of the day, I want to make sure that our employees, who are the end-users, are consulted. If we put them on a board, we need to hold the meetings. We need to have the meeting, and we need to keep them involved. We shouldn't ask for the opinion of our employees, but at the end of the day, we're just gonna get what we want to get, and then we gotta turn around and purchase something else. Because even in the case of the police equipment, you know, there were questions, and I don't think people were heard. So I just want to make sure and ensure that we are having conversations with the end-users, because they're the ones that are gonna have to carry on the day-to-day activities.
Duly noted. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
It's four to one, it passes.
Thank you.
The board will now consider request of Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Bivens.
Please take them together.
My questions are to all of them, so it's fine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. I have twenty-seven items for your consideration this evening, twenty-three for prior year.
Hold on a second, ma'am, please. If we could, be respectful of the speaker and keep the noise down. Thank you.
Okay. I have twenty-seven items for your consideration this evening, twenty-three for prior fiscal year 2017 accounting up that we normally do, and have one for the current fiscal year, and three requests for refunds. Budget Amendment 2-29 is for internal audits, to amend the budget in the amount of $4,404 to cover the cost of salaries, benefits, and supplies, which were paid throughout fiscal year 2017. Budget Amendment 2-30 is for Central Services Print Shop, to transfer funds in the amount of $758 to cover the cost of salaries, which were paid throughout fiscal year 2017. Budget Amendment 2-31 is to transfer funds to cover the cost of regular salaries paid throughout fiscal year 2017. The total amount is $55,623 for salaries, other contract services and office supplies as well. And we will be decreasing expenses in other department or areas for elections and registrations of $31,254 and an additional $24,369 from revenues. Budget Amendment 2-32 is for the prison, to amend budget to cover the cost of regular salaries, utilities, and uniform expenses, which were paid throughout fiscal year 2017. The amount is $166,783. Budget Amendment 2-33 is for the Sheriff's Office. It's to increase expenditures for various salary accounts, medical service fees, other contract service fees, and other expenses for supplies in the amount of $1,55,618 with $269,815 coming from various accounts within the Sheriff's Department, and $570,702 coming from revenues generated in the Sheriff's Department, and $215,101 from the General Fund. And that's to cover, again, cost wages, benefits, fees, supplies, and transport expenses. Budget Amendment 2-34 is for professional services, to transfer funds in the amount of $912,005 to cover the cost of fees, advertisement claims, and supply expenses, which were paid throughout fiscal year 2017. Budget Amendment 2-35 is for EMS, to amend the budget in the amount of $189,971 to cover the cost of regular salaries paid throughout fiscal year 2017. $184,959 of that comes from other areas within that department, with $5,012 being transferred in from the property taxes for General Fund. 2-44 is for the library, is to amend the budget in the amount of $22,757 to cover the cost of library books and materials, personnel expenses, and other contract service fees for fiscal year 2017. We transferred $6,857 from an expense account within the library and increased their library staff salary, state reimbursement, revenues by $15,900. Budget Amendment 2-45 is for Parks and Recreation, to amend the budget to cover the cost of personnel expenses, contract service fees, recreation expenses, supplies, beach entertainment services, rental expenses, repair and maintenance, and casualty and other losses for fiscal year 2017. The amount is $185,843. And we are also decreasing expenses in other areas under Parks and Recreation to cover those increases in the expenses. Budget Amendment 2-46 is for Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund, to amend the budget in the amount of $90,795 to cover the cost of an Endeavor robot for the Sheriff's Department. Budget Amendment 2-42 is for the Forest Park Tax Allocation District Fund, to amend the budget in the amount of $246,832 to cover the cost of intergovernmental expenditures. Budget Amendment 2-48 is for the Mountain View Tax Allocation District Fund, to amend the budget to cover the cost of additional contract service fees in the amount of $40,000. Budget Amendment 2-49 is for the Medical Self-Insurance Fund Flexible Spending, to amend the budget in the amount of $20,000 to cover the cost of agent fees and claims expenses. Budget Amendment 2-50 is for the Debt Service Fund, to amend the budget in the amount of $825 to cover the cost of interest charges for fiscal year 17. 2-51 is for Community Development, to amend the budget to cover the cost of additional credit card service charges for fiscal year 2017 in the amount of $5,000. Budget Amendment 2-52 is to amend the budget to provide funds for regular wages, benefits, and deficit reserves in the Victim Assistance Fund in the amount of $175,000. Budget Amendment 2-53 is for the Ellwood Tax Allocation District Fund and the TAD Capital Projects Fund, to amend the budget in the amount of $330,240 to cover an operating transfer from TAD proceeds to the Capital Projects Fund. Budget Amendment 2-54 for the District Attorney's Account, Office, I'm sorry, to transfer funds in the amount of $18,541 to cover the cost of salaries, which were paid throughout fiscal year 2017. Budget Amendment 2-55 is the Medical Self-Insurance Fund, to amend the budget in the amount of $1,437,888 to cover the cost of supplies and claims expenses. Budget Amendment 2-56 is for other general government, to amend the budget to cover the cost of retiree claims, sanitation expense, contract service fees, and building improvement expenses in the amount of $1,659,734. Budget Amendment 4-135 is for 2009 SPOS, to amend the budget in the amount of $518,678 for payments received from the cities of Forest Park, Lovejoy, and Riverdale for road repair and maintenance work performed by Transportation and Development based on the service delivery agreement. Budget Amendment 4-179 is for 2004 SPOS, to amend the budget in the amount of $112,586 for transportation and development salaries and benefits related to work performed on SPOS projects. Budget Amendment 4-180 is for 2009 SPOS, to amend the budget in the amount of $1,968,548 for the transportation and development salaries and benefits related to work performed on SPOS projects. And this budget amendment is for the current fiscal year 2018. Budget Amendment 2-12 is for EMS, to amend in donations in the amount of $8,500 collected to fund catering services needed for the fiftieth anniversary celebration. I have a request for a refund in the amount of $500 to Jason Mask and Company in Hampton, Georgia, for the refund for demolition bond for permit BP 2017 C6449719. I have a request for refund in the amount of $500 for Jason Mask and Company in Hampton, Georgia, so refund for demolition bond for permit BP 2017 C6449722. And the final one is a request for a refund in the amount of $500 to Jason Mask and Company in Hampton, Georgia, also for a refund for demolition bond for permit BP 2017 C6449723.
Alright, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, and are there any questions? Here and now, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
The board will consider the request of Human Resources Director Pamela Ambles. Take them separately.
Please take them separately for me.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Human Resources, we have three requests this evening. On behalf of the Office of the COO, Human Resources requests to add an Administrative Secretary, Grade 15, Step 1. This position will support the Deputy COO. Budgetary impact is $46,574. The funding source has been identified as a 50-50 split between the General Fund and SPOS.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. We held this item the last meeting. What's changed from the last meeting to this meeting? Between what was presented last meeting and this meeting?
Commissioner, initially, what we submitted was saying that 100% of the salary would be supported through SPOS. We went back and looking at the fact that that position will be doing work more than just SPOS-related, so we end up changing the funding source where it's 50-50, 50% from the SPOS and 50% from the General Fund.
Okay. The other concern I have is, how are you gonna identify exactly and keep up with what is spent, the time that's spent on SPOS versus on regular business? Because that's gonna open up our liability and us having to answer a little bit more to that. Are they gonna track their day-to-day activities?
We'll govern it the same way we govern our Transportation and Development projects. They actually are projects that are funded through SPOS as well, so they have to keep timesheets on their work. So we'll track it the same way we do with our Transportation and Development employees.
Okay. The other question I have with this, though, is, this is gonna be a budgetary impact to us. Even though it's only 50% of it coming out of the General Fund, it's not a lot necessarily. But how can we substantiate doing this when we know that we've lost clerks? We've lost a lot of employees that have left because of our salaries. And we said we don't have the funding, and we just approved quite a few things and change in funding. So what substantiates this to be added? How can we answer to the employees who we say we don't have any money, but here we are adding this position? We've already added a Deputy COO, and now we're adding the Executive Secretary. It's not the amount, it's how can we substantiate making this decision?
So that I'm clear, Commissioner, I'm not following. What staff have we communicated?
What caused the need for us to have this? Is it that the Deputy COO is not able to type up reports, or? I mean, I'm not trying to be, no, no. What caused for this to happen? Why are we doing this?
Well, a couple of things. As we transition with the Deputy COO position, there has not been any administrative support associated with actual, the spreadsheets, looking at ways by which we support, even to work with our contractor. And so what we're trying to do is ensure that, we have a lot of construction projects that will be coming on in 2018, that will call for a lot of the interface from the COO's office along with our contractual relationship with Morlan Altobelli, as well as other contractors. And so we're trying to ensure that we have the proper support as we continue to try to ensure that a lot of the construction projects moving forward is still on task, is the primary goal.
And not to prolong it, but one more. Don't we have someone in the Finance Department that's assigned to the SPOS project specifically?
She's a SPOS accountant. She's just the accounting for the SPOS Fund, not any other administrative work.
She only does the accounting work for it? So when we talk about the spreadsheets, these are different spreadsheets. I don't know, I'm asking.
I'm not sure. The Deputy, sorry, Chief Operating Officer, Stanford, would have to provide more context on the exact type of spreadsheets that he's referencing.
And then on top of that, Morlan Altobelli also keeps reports as well. And we're paying them to manage the SPOS.
Yes, they do keep reports, but they work with my employee. We make sure that we have everything, that the account has everything accounted for on the county side. Where it's more, Morlan Altobelli is more from a programmatic standpoint. And but we make sure that all of, everything is on...
I can paint a picture for you, Commissioner. So it's a three-legged stool. You have, under the Finance Office, you have Ms. Sharon Stone, as the CFO is alluding to, handles the accounting portion. You have Morlan Altobelli that handles primarily the execution of the work with architect and design work. The third component, as we're talking about, the admin person. They run the parallels between what is needed from the financial side and what we're doing with the contractor to ensure that the work that's being carried out is done more seamlessly. Now, to your point, a Deputy COO has done quite a few of onboarding a lot of those other projects that will call for him to be out of the office to include, in some instances, becoming the project manager. When all that work is being taken care of, there still have to be some coordination of the administrative work to still be taken care of. So part of our primary reason for asking for that position is to... is to help with administrative support as we're doing multitude, a multitude of things to include project management. And you got to remember, the project management is bigger than the SPOST. We have projects that are capital-related that has nothing to do with SPOST projects that certainly the deputy COO and the staff is helping to support that area.
Okay. Thank you for answering that.
All right, let me say this. Um, the position that they are proposing is at the same salary and pay grade as other similar positions, uh, similar positions throughout the county, correct?
Yes, sir, Chairman. The-
And the forty-six is salaries and benefits.
Yes, sir. The administrative secretary is one of our benchmark positions that is the same from department to department. So there is no difference in this particular salary than an administrative secretary for TND, an administrative secretary for probate court is one of those benchmark positions that's the same throughout.
And that's something that we do, as a board, we definitely need to work on and increase the salary, so, you know, there's no difference from this position or any other position. But let me say this, the majority of this board created the COO's position. Therefore, we need to be responsible enough to provide the personnel with adequate resources for him or her to do his, in this case, for him to do his job. And with that being said, you know, it would be unfair to another employee to say, hey, because this person does not have a secretary or administrative assistant, then we need to pile that on another employee. So I think that this is, uh, within reason to ask for a support staff.
If I, if I, if I may ask, though, my concern is that it seems that there's, there's duplication of services. For me, I don't have a clear picture of that there is not duplication of services, because Greg acts as the project manager. And I know we've got capital projects as well, and I get the fifty-fifty. So for me, I just honestly do not feel that, um, that I can ensure there's not, that I'm getting enough information back to say that there's not duplication of services. It's not that I don't support the person in the role or think the person, the, the role itself needs to be supported. We have to be careful with what exactly are the duties? Because if we're already getting reports from Morland Altobelli that are line item reports, and we're saying we're going to hire somebody to give us more reports, we need to clearly understand what it is that that person's going to be doing, not just in subject, but in detail. That's my concern. So, um, we can vote. That's the only thing I want to say.
Anybody, you have something?
Yes, okay.
Yes, Commissioner. So I, I, I think the only, the only difference here is, is that please keep in mind that the DCOO's responsibilities is more than SPOST. We have capital outlay projects that are, can't be billed towards SPOST legally, they can't be billed towards SPOST. We still have capital needs that we still hold him accountable for, to take care of, and there's no administrative support to help him in that space. Hence, it was even more of a logical reason for us to come back and provide a fifty-fifty split opposed a hundred percent being billed on the SPOST.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, statements? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
It's four of one, it passes. Next.
Okay. On behalf of CFO Bivens, we request to delete Accounting Technician Senior, which is currently budgeted at grade seventeen, step thirty, total compensation sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. We are requesting to add an Accounts Payable Assistant Manager, grade twenty-five, step one, total compensation seventy-one thousand, thirty-seven dollars. I would like to add that this position is an important part of the CFO succession, uh, plan for her department. The budgetary impact of this request is two thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. However, the CFO will reduce her part-time salary line item to make up the difference. Therefore, the general, uh, the, there will be no impact to the general fund.
Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Four of one, it passes. Next.
Lastly, on behalf of the Fire and Emergency Services, we are requesting to reclassify Administrative Secretary, grade fifteen, step one, total compensation forty-five thousand, five seventy-four, to Fire Payroll Technician, grade sixteen, step one, total compensation forty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. I would like to bring to the board attention that LR thirteen fifty-three, which were presented in September of two thousand sixteen, created a Police Payroll Technician, and this request will align those two, uh, positions because they do have similar compensable, compensable factors. The budgetary impact of this, uh, request is one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Ms. Ambles, you said that the first total compensation is forty-five, five seventy-four. Our book reflects forty-six.
I'm sorry, Chairman. The total compensation at grade fifteen, step one, is forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I have one question. When are we going to do the study that we put in a budget to do?
I would like to thank, officially thank the board for providing that resource. And I am working on, well, let me back up. We've already submitted an RFP, uh, to Central Services, so we're working on that. Uh, hopefully, they will get started the first of January, and we should be able to have some results for you within the next three and a half months after they get started.
Okay, second question. The items that we are, we've been changing, are they of an emergency nature that we couldn't have just waited until we did that study?
Well, I-
They are? I see Mr. COO saying yes, they are.
So, to, to answer, could they have waited? They could wait, yes, ma'am. The, the deal there is, is though, we understand that in some instances, even when we do the employee comp, um, compensatory study, it's not like we're going to revert those positions back. So we already know if there's, where we've identified, there's already parity issues, i.e., PD and Fire. We will continue to bring forth those issues as they come forward. However, we are looking at having a bigger conversation with the departments, at the Department Heads Meeting the end of this month to talk about what will be permissible as far as the criteria is for us, positions to bring forward until after we do an employee, um, compensation study.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Let me ask, uh, the budgetary impact, is that to the general fund or the fire fund?
Uh, to my understanding, the general fund. Is that correct, Chief Mercison?
Fire fund.
Hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Attorney Chuck Reed.
Please take them together unless, uh, board wants a single one out. Here or none? Please proceed.
Uh, the first request is from the Senior Services Department, requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the use of in-kind match with Wheels on Wheels for aging funding received for the purpose of senior citizens, senior services trips provided by Clayton County CSA Transit through the Department of Human Res, uh, Human Services Contract with Clayton County CSA. Uh, the approval of this match with Wheels on Wheels volunteer hours allows the additional needs of the Clayton County senior population to be met, and there is no financial position of impact to the county. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. Alls may be required under the terms of the agreement. Next request is from the Office of Youth Services, requesting the Board of Commissioners authorize Clayton County Office of Youth Services in collaboration with the Clayton Collaborative Authority to apply for the American Eagles Outfitters Foundation Community Grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. Alls may be required under the terms of the agreement. Next request is from the Department of Parks and Recreation, requesting approval of a supplemental agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation and Clayton County Parks and Recreation on the Justice Creek Trail Project. The contract was approved on September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, and the attached supplemental agreement will extend the reimbursement period to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. And this time extension will allow the contractor to complete the Justice Creek Enhancement Project to allow Clayton County to be reimbursed, reimbursed for expenses related to the project. Further, requesting authorization for the chairman to execute the agreement, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect a appropriate revenue source and expense. Alls may be required under the terms of the agreement. The next request is from Clayton County Water Authority, requesting a permanent easement for the property located at one-one-six-five-zero SLR Boulevard in Lovejoy, Georgia. And this permanent easement is to maintain the stormwater utility system on the property identified by tax map parcel number zero-six-one-three-four-one-five-six-zero-zero-six. Again, that tax parcel, uh, tax map parcel number is located at eleven-six-five-zero SLR Boulevard in Lovejoy, Georgia. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the easement agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement. The next item is also a request from the Clayton County Water Authority, requesting that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners convey a permanent easement to maintain the stormwater utility system on the property identified by tax map parcel number zero-six-one-three-two-one-five-six-zero-zero-three, located at one-one-eight-six-six Hastings Bridge Road in Lovejoy, Georgia. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute a, a easement agreement, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement. The next request is from the Senior Services Department, and they are requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners to apply for and accept grant funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission to provide essential services for the aging program in the amount of six hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The county provides a match of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is the aging program employee salaries. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. Alls may be required under the terms of the agreement. The next request is Resolution number tw- twenty-seventeen seventy-two. It's a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Highwoods Realty Limited Partnership, a North Carolina limited partnership, to extend the due diligence period to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. And that is it.
And that is it. All right, do I have a motion?
Okay, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on any of the items?
Yes.
Commissioner Amrick.
Uh, sixteen, sixteen and seventeen, do we have anybody here from the Water Authority?
Do you have the pictures?
Uh, no, I, I don't, but I received a question this afternoon regarding, um, whether or not the Water Authority, in the event they reneg on, um, making whatever repairs and all, that this will not fall back on the county when they say that they would like the permanent easement.
I got it maintained.
Do you have this right here?
No, I, I, no, my constituent is here, so I just, I was hoping somebody would be here from the Water Authority to, uh, to give the citizen some kind of assurance.
We can get an answer for you, um, for that, um, tomorrow if you would like us to have someone from-
Well, we have, we have something here. I think, I, I believe he just wanted to hear verbally from the Board Authority.
Did Rodney already leave?
Yeah, he's gone.
Yeah, he left.
Well, it's within the documents, so.
Yeah, right. It's, it's within the documents and all, but I, I, he just wanted some kind of, uh, assurance from, and I was hoping that, uh, someone would be here from management, the Water Authority.
Want me to give this to him?
I'll, I'll copy that and, and give that to him. And, and talk with someone, and have someone from the, uh, Authority talk with him.
Right, sure, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Chairman, we, I also have, um, exec, I'd like to request executive session for litigation.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to have an appointment. Uh, we have one appointment this evening to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board to fill the expiring term of Bernie Bowmaster. Are there any nominations? That, it's a three-year term expiring October seventh of twenty twenty.
Yes, I recommend Mr. Eric Bell.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
The next four items are zoning petitions. The first two have the same applicant. The applicant is Scott Butler on behalf of Century Communities of Georgia LLC, and the request is for a modification to the NBC Trace Phase One Final Plat Subdivision. And this is to remove the zoning con, condition requiring thirty-three percent of homes to have side-entry garage. The planning and zoning staff and ZAG recommended approval. The location is at Highway one-thirty-eight in NBC Trace in Riverdale, Georgia. This is Commission District Two. Commissioner Hambrick.
If they would come forward.
Is the petitioner present?
As they're coming forward, uh, is there anyone in opposition to this request? Is there anyone in opposition? No, come take the podium here. Yeah, you can give that to him. Where they going?
Uh, which one is, uh, Kimberly, Kimberly?
Thank you.
State your name again first, sir.
Andy Welch, um, at twenty-two-hundred Keys Ferry Court in McDonough, Georgia. Um, I'm an attorney representing, uh, Scott Butler and his company. The request is very straightforward. As you've already announced, it's a, it's a modification to the condition of zoning for Phase One. Um, it's a thirty-three percent requirement of, uh, side-entry home, uh, garages, and the request is to remove that condition from the, uh, from the plat. If there are questions, I'll be happy to answer any of those questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Welch? Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, well, I would like for Kimberly to, yeah, reflect on the conversation we've had regarding-
Um, sure. Um, this case, item number twenty. Uh, Scott Butler on behalf of Century Communities, they're requesting to eliminate the thirty-three percent of homes to have a side-entry garage. Staff did recommend approval of this request, and the zoning advisory group also recommended approval of this request.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, no.
Commissioner?
Okay, I would, right, I would like to recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
And the next application, also, the applicant is Scott Butler on behalf of Century Communities of Georgia LLC. This is a request for a modification to the NBC Trace Phase Two Plan Unit Development. And this is to remove zoning conditions number one and two, and to reduce the front yard setback. And the property is, continues to be located at Highway one-thirty-eight in NBC Trace in Riverdale, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, they recommend approval for the set, setback reductions and condition number eight. However, the staff recommends, recommends denial for the removal of condition number one. ZAG recommends approval with conditions. This is District Two, Commissioner Hambrick.
All right, once again, as, um, I'm assuming Mr. Welch is going to represent the applicant. Anybody here in opposition of, to this request?
I'm not in opposition. I just have a question.
Okay, if you just hold what you have right quick. Yes, sir, if you could take the podium.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, uh, commission, thank you for your time. Andy Welch, um, twenty-two-hundred Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia. If I might approach, um, you've heard the recommendations from the staff, uh, which is approval. There is a condition that dealt with the mulch trails, um, that would be allow, allowing us to use mulch trails um, in the, there's a recreational area in part of Phase Two, and we want to put the mulch trails in that area. Um, and that would, so addressing condition eight would take care of that issue for us. And then also, we had rec, we asked for a reduction in the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, which would allow us to have the larger-sized homes that are required by the conditions, but also give us a backyard. So that's the reason for the request of the five-foot reduction, which also staff and the ZAG have also recommended to you for approval. The, the one issue that we have some, um, uh, discussion over is the condition number one. Condition number one dealt with, um, a really odd configuration of lots in the original, uh, proposed plat for Phase Two. And it may be helpful if I can show you that plat proposal that was made earlier on when the- And it may be helpful if I can show you that plat proposal that was made earlier on when the condition was imposed, is there a way that I can show that to you?
Do you have some copies?
I do, well, I have one large copy. That I can, can I walk it across the front?
Can I ask a question? The chair?
Commissioner.
And I, is there any way we can get this up on that big beautiful board so that we could see and we could all see, is that possible? Maybe not this meeting, maybe the next one.
They would have to submit it prior to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
If they do that, then we can.
And put it in the jump drive?
And I can, and, and the configuration is an area over where Atlanta gas line, gas line line, gas light line runs. And in the original configuration, there was about an acre of land that was divided up into three lot, a proposed for division of three lots. It was lots forty-nine, forty-eight, and fifty, and the way they were configuring one of the lots, forty-eight, was a very deep, almost kind of a flag lot behind the home of what would have been lot forty-nine. So based upon that configuration, it really, it did not work, I mean, in all honesty, it just didn't work, so. But what we've asked to do is, is to configure that one acre lot into two lots, not three, but into two. So we would have, uh, but in order to do that, you'd have to remove condition number one so that we can reconfigure that. And I know there's some concerns, the staff has expressed those very well, and, um, Ms. Kimberly has done a job, good job of expressing those concerns about the open space. But let me just give you some of the numerical facts as it pertains to the open space, because I think that's important for you to hear. Um, this subdivision, uh, is part of, it's Phase One and Phase Two. And in the open space requirements, the total acreage of the subdivision is fifty-three point six seven acres. And the lots, there are a hundred and sixteen lots in that subdivision. Much of which of the subdivision is developed for, about fifty-eight percent of the subdivision will be developed into lots. That means there's forty-one percent, um, over forty-one percent of the subdivision is undeveloped, or is in the park area, the recreational area for the playground. So that le, in, in a P U D, the requirements for open space is twenty percent. That, um, that twenty-two acres that's gonna be undeveloped, that consists of forty-one percent of the, uh, overall subdivision development. So we're, so as it stands right now, we're exceeding the open space requirement by twenty-one percent. The request tonight is to allow us to utilize about an acre, just over an acre of land that is otherwise designated for open space. But if you eliminate condition number one, we can use the, that one acre, put it into two taxable lots. And the open space for the entire subdivision will be at thirty-nine point three percent. Still well in excess of the twenty percent required for a P U D, or twenty-five percent required for a, a zoning of one eighty CS. So the request, we hope you'll see that the request is, is really not to do any detrimental damage to the open spaces a total. This subdivision already exceeds that open space requirement quite significantly. But this would allow us to take that one acre and utilize it into two lots. If you strike condition number one, it would allow us to use that one acre and put two lots there, which then would be taxable lots for the, the digest of the county. And that's why we're asking for that change.
Okay, are there any questions in reference to what Mr. Welch just presented?
Uh, well, I believe the concern is regarding the green space. So, uh, Kimberly, if you could give.
Um, sure, um, this. Phase two of this subdivision was approved as a site plan development, it was approved by site plan through the plan unit development process. And the applicant is asking to remove a condition that would allow them to reconfigure several lots in the subdivision. At the expense of removing approved, pre-approved open space through that plan unit development process. Um, staff is of the opinion that that is not in the best interest of the, of what was approved, it's not, it was not the intent. Of that plan unit development, uh, site plan approval. Um, when it was initially approved, and, um, I mean, we would like to preserve our open space and green space in, in perpetuity at, at all costs. And, um, we just feel like that would be a detriment to the community, to have it removed.
Okay, but did I hear you say that the agreement was three?
The original.
Three lots?
The original, when that condition was imposed.
Right.
The original layout had, um, took that one acre of, of area and divided into three lots. Um, when the condition is put in place, then it removed all three of those lots.
Okay.
And so what we're asking is that you, instead of having the three lots there, we would like to put the two lots back in. Um, and this, in the open space area is a confined one acre area where an Atlanta gas light line runs in between. So it's not, it's not area that would be topographical area, it's not, uh, it's not a wetland, it's not a flood plain. It really is in at the corner of two, the intersection of two streets. Um, and it just happens to be that the proposed subdivision of that was very awkward to begin with. Um, I, I do understand nearly his concerns about open space and preservation, but I, please understand that this particular acre. Has a gas line underneath it, it is not wetland, it is not, um, it is not an environmentally sensitive area. All the rest of the area that we are preserving is environmentally sensitive areas, wetlands and some creek areas. And then a, a beautiful sloping area that. Beautiful sloping area that, where we are gonna place, uh, and already graded out for a recreational area for children, playgrounds, walking trails. Um, that's all interconnected to all the main streets in the subdivision. So we would just ask to have those two lots back, and that, by striking condition number one, we would be able to do that.
I have one question, are you all proposing to put houses on the gas line, is that what you're saying?
Nope, there's no, the gas line runs.
I just want to clarify that.
No, no ma'am, we would not do that, A, you can't do it because the easement prohibits it. But within the one acre, uh, understanding that that's essentially works out to being two half acre lots, thereabout, uh, within that area, we would want to put the, those lots back in.
Yeah, Scott, is that one of those, um, areas that has that deep slope?
Uh, um, excuse me, I, I need to, I think I need to clarify a little bit, there's.
Please state your name for it.
Sorry, Scott Butler, um, I'm from Gwinnett County. I need to clarify a little bit, the, the condition number one from the zoning that was done in twenty twelve said to remove lots forty-eight and fifty and reconfigure lot forty-nine. Those are three lots that were at the corner of, at an intersection where the gas line easement ran in between these lots. Um, so the condition said to remove two of the lots and reconfigure one of them. In that same exact area, we've revised our land plan where instead of it being three lots, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty, it's just two lots. And there's no flag lot, there's not, one of the lots is normal shaped, it's almost a rectangle, and the other one is kind of triangular. The issue with the open space evolved because our land plan that we've developed. About ten lots away from this area that's in question at the end of a cul-de-sac is where we're showing two lots that were formerly open, they were opens, they were lots, and then they were, they were. Shown as open space and at the site plan that was approved back in twenty twelve. When we had the zoning advisory group meeting, it became obvious that the issue with removal of condition one that re, that was related to lots forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty. Was separate from the two lots fifty-four and fifty-five at the end of the street and the cul-de-sac and the open space area that's in question. And, um, so at the zoning advisory group. The zoning advisory group was questioning Kimberly and said, are the, how are these related, are they related? And Kimberly's response was, I'm not quoting, but, uh, something to the effect of, if we separate these two issues. Lots fifty-four and fifty-five at the end of the street, the open space area, if we separate that issue from the removal of condition one that pertains just to forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty. Then she recommended approval, zoning advisory group, um, motion to approve her recommendation. And so what, what I want to do here is have condition one removed, which said removal of forty-eight and fifty. Or forty-eight, fifty, and reconfigure lot forty-nine, essentially take three lots and turn them into one. I want to remove that condition using our site plan that takes those three lots and converts them into two. And not, it, with no relation to lots fifty-four and fifty-five at the end of the street that were open space on the P U D plan that was approved back in twenty twelve. We're gonna have to submit for a recorded plat for Phase Two after this hearing. And when we do that, then we're gonna submit the issue of lots fifty-four and fifty-five and dealing with the open space. So condition number one removal has no impact at all on open space reduction or increase. It, the open space is not related to condition number one.
What about the, uh, will you have the same setback and all for the front?
Yes, ma'am.
As you have for the others?
Yes, ma'am.
What about a backyard?
Um, lot forty, let's see. Are you, are you referring to the? One of the lots will have a much bigger backyard than it did because it's become, two lots have become one. Uh, that would be lot forty-eight. And then forty-nine has a typical sized backyard, and it also backs up to the easement, so it's almost like it has a larger than normal backyard. Because of the easement.
Okay, will you still have that walkway?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, the walk that you were talking about and the?
Yes, the, what I'm talking about, this area has nothing to do with the open space and the park and the walkways and all that, this is actually two streets over from the park.
Okay, excuse me, sidebar.
What's up?
Mrs. Chair, can I ask a question while they're talking?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Gregory.
Just have a question about your, your trails.
Yes, ma'am.
And the, um, playgrounds you mentioned. At what point, you know, are you gonna turn this over to the HOA? Um, are you making it very clear to the residents, if this is approved, that if they have the responsibility for the playgrounds or trails, if it is approved? You know, by what means are you gonna make sure that they're responsible, I mean, that they are aware that this is their responsibility? We, I, I know it's all, it sounds good every time someone says, well, we'll just throw in a playground, we'll throw in trails, and then we have, you know, old trails that nobody wants to walk along.
Right, well, we, we have, um, I'm not sure if it's actually been done as of this date, but it will be done. Prior to the sale of the first home, we'll establish recorded protective covenants for the community of Embassy Trace. And when we do that, we'll establish the Embassy Trace Homeowners Association, which is, uh, which, um, encumbers the entire development. All of the lots and all of the open space. When we do that, we'll create a budget for the Homeowners Association to operate under, and in the beginning. Uh, it will be funded by what, the term deficit funding, which means the developer builder funds. The construction of the open space and the amenities and the parks and the playgrounds and the trails. And that becomes the responsibility of the Homeowners Association, which is managed and funded by the developer. When we get to the end of the development, the way our company manages that process is we will have homeowners in the community that have volunteered to be on the board of directors for the Homeowners Association. And they will, they'll be elected members. We meet with those elected members and walk through the entire community, all the open space, all of the common area that's the responsibility of the Homeowners Association. Review the condition of it, create a report that shows any deficiencies, and then we repair what is, what needs to be repaired, and what's the obligation of the Homeowners Association, the developer at that time. And then we hand over management of the association to the actual elected homeowner board. And they are funded, yeah, at, by that time, it may be eighty percent funded by homeowners in the community paying their homeowners dues. And the balance had been deficit funded by us, but once we've sold the last house, then the responsibility is to the Homeowners Association. And that responsibility's, um, memorialized in recorded covenants and a Homeowners Association.
Do you all have a timeline?
It really depends on the market.
Market.
Um, I mean, if we sell four houses a month, um, we would probably be about two and a half years.
Okay.
When we sold our last house.
So do you say, you know, in five years, two years?
About two and a half years.
About two and a half, okay.
Any other questions for either one of these gentlemen? All right, y'all just take a seat for a second, there's a young lady who would like to speak. And ma'am, if you would address your questions to this board, we'll try to get your answers.
Once again, good evening, my name is Deborah Hodge, and I'm with, uh, once sixteen hundred Coronet Drive, Rivendell. My subdivision abuts this new, new development, and I do have some, uh, homeowners from my subdivision Embassy Trace. I have a problem, I think when they read the description, they said, they quoted, uh, conditions one and two. But I did see in my book here, it's, uh, in my thing here is condition eight, so is it condition two or eight we're dealing with?
Condition number one and condition number eight.
Okay, so you probably need to correct your records. This development has been going on for over ten years, and we as a concerned residents have, we have some concerns about it. I do agree with the denial of, um, to remove condition one since the, we feel that this development is overdeveloped. Um, when we first came to this board, we. We expressed our concerns about the amount of homes going up in this area. We have had a lot of problems, we have had runoff problems, and we have have stor- storm drain issues. So, uh, I heard him talk about the HOA, um, covenants, which would be finally recorded after the, the development is come, uh, completed. When we attended the, the community meeting, um, there was talk about sidewalks on one thirty-eight. And, um, he said, the, 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 Mr. Scott said, or whoever was the representative at that time said. That there were no sidewalks requested, and, um, Ms. Lanis was very doubtful about that, and she expressed a concern that there would be no sidewalks. On one thirty-eight, and we are request, we would like that to be included in the condition. Um, with respect to the stormwater and the undisturbed buffers, we are concerned about residents not keeping that up, and. Um, we would tell that they would be responsible for, um, keeping the stormwater area, uh, clean and not trashed. And we are very concerned about that, and we would like the county to rectify that and make sure that this is something stipulated either in the conditions. Or that the county continue to maintain the stormwater runoff, because we have had problems along homes on Ambassador. And also, right behind me, there are, there is a cul-de-sac that has a very steep drop-off. And I'm concerned about homes being put there, and then there's this steep drop-off in the backyard, which those lots were not supposed to be developed. According to the original. Uh, in the, after the second developer came along, those lots were eliminated, but now I see that there are lots, right? In my backyard, and there's too steep dropped off, drop-off, and when I asked about putting up a fence, they said that would be the responsibility of the homeowner. So I can imagine trash, being trashed there, and it's right close to the, um, the creek. So those are some concerns that we do have. And it would be, it would be nice if we can, or the Board of Commissioners could institute a, a requir- requirement. That when they come before the zoning board, that they bring transparencies, because I don't understand if you don't have this in front of you. What you, you don't know what you are looking at, and the, the people who are here, they can't see what, what they are looking at. So if they have a transparency that you can put up on your board, it would make life easier for all of us who are attending the meeting to know what they are talking about, because. Because I don't know where lot forty-five is and forty-eight is and one, and what, one eighty-six and one eighty-five. I do not know where they are, if they fall right behind us or it would be impacting another neighbor. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, and that's an easy fix, uh, as far as addressing the ZAG board to make sure that they put out a visual aid for you.
Yeah, that could be a requirement when they file a zoning case, that they file a transparency of the, they can have an eight and a half by eleven transparency for each case that they are presenting and with the lot. So, it, it would make life much easier for those who are attending.
And we agree, and let me say this about the storm water, the Clayton County Water Authority is responsible for that. And will you actually pay within your water bill, a certain percentage that goes towards that? So we definitely need to make sure that they are held accountable to make sure that that is always a clean, uh, water system there.
Yeah, because, you know, before the, um, we had problems when the first developer came and it impacted people on those residents on, on, um, Ambassador and Za. And, um, we finally got the county to admit that they were responsible for maintaining that area and they had to go and do a lot of cleaning out because folks dropped refrigerators and stoves and everything down inside, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Is there anything in rebuttal that Mr. Welch or Butler would like to say about anything she said?
One of the things that I can, uh, mention, it, it's not really a rebuttal, it's more information. Um, Mrs. Hodge mentioned, uh, stormwater issue on Ambassador Drive or behind Ambassador Drive. We had a meeting, uh, back during the summer, uh, that was attended by several of the homeowners on Ambassador Drive to discuss the drainage issue. And we have since that time gone out and done work on the rear of their property because the drainage problem actually existed on their property. It wasn't on our property, but it was partially a result of the original developer. I guess I need to make clear it was developed ten years ago by someone else. Went, uh, was foreclosed on and we purchased it from an investor earlier this year. So we're not the same developer that created the problem ten years ago. But we have gone out there with equipment and material and, uh, cleaned up that drainage area and made it where it flows properly. We're not finished with it, uh, we're, we should be finished in another couple of weeks. Um, it, it's, but anyway, we've made that, we've solved that drainage problem. Um, as far as the, um, the site planning and the lots, I understand Mrs. Hodge, Hodge's concern cause nobody knows what we're talking about, forty-eight, forty-nine and fifty, or fifty-four and fifty-five. I think the, the point I want to make clearer though is that condition one removal only affects lot forty-eight, forty-nine and fifty. It's a removal of a condition that changed three lots into one. Our site plan changes three lots into two. And none of, and condition number one's removal has no impact on open space. We'll address the open space reduction area, which happens to be the area behind Mrs. Hodge's home when we submit for our final plat and come before this board again. We'll, we'll, at that time, be able to discuss open space, lot count and that type thing.
Okay, so...
Thank you. Uh, hold on a second, if you, if you have a question?
No, no.
Okay, I just want to ask one last time, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, Commissioner Hammer.
Okay, if Kimberly, if you would, um, just read off what you, um, your recommendation, which is the same as what the, uh, ZAG board recommended with the conditions.
Okay, um, in reference to Embassy Trace Phase Two Planning Development, Site Development Plan, um, removal of condition number one, ZAG recommended approval of this condition, um, to allow lot reconfiguration without elimination or impact on open space. Um, ZAG and staff recommended approval to remove condition number eight. And to remove, to reduce the front yard setback, staff and ZAG recommended approval.
Okay, so that would include the, the two? The two lots?
Correct.
Right, instead of the...
Okay.
Um, I move for approval of the recommendation by ZAG and by, uh, the administrator.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, uh, uh, oppose, this unanimous. Sir, uh, if you would, please get with, uh, Ms. Hodge and the others and show them exactly what you're talking about on your plat, whether it's tonight or some other time, please make sure you get with them.
Item number twenty-two. The applicant is Scott Taylor on behalf of Skyway Towers LLC. Their request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a wireless telecommunications facility. The property is located at thirty-two fifty Mount Zion Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff recommends approval, ZAG recommends approval with conditions. This is District One, Commissioner Gregory. Is the petitioner?
Before he starts, is there anyone here in opposition to this request? Anybody in opposition? I'm gonna let them leave out. And unless, uh, Commissioner Gregory wants to make a motion, then we'll hear from the applicant.
Um, I'm ready to make a motion, I know the applicant wants to, um, explain something, but if you want to, go on, you're free to go ahead.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Um, my name is Scott Taylor. Um, I'm, uh, with the law firm of Arnold Golden Gregory, Council on Skyway Towers, which is a... Not really sure if that's coming from me.
I apologize, but I don't know if that's that... Okay, please proceed also.
Thank you. Um, I represent Skyway Towers, which is a, a tower builder, wireless telecommunications tower builder and owner that works with wireless carriers to develop wireless networks. As you all know, the demand for wireless communications, voice, data, E nine-one-one is all increasing exponentially. Probably everybody in this room has a cellphone, so there's a need to address issues when there are, uh, capacity and coverage problems in the network, uh, of a given carrier. Um, here, uh, Skyway Tower has an agreement with T-Mobile, um, who's attempting to respond to customer demands. And in a particular area here in Clayton County, T-Mobile has identified a spot where there's, uh, coverage issues and capacity issues. Um, here, it's, um, near the I seventy-five, six seventy-five interchange. Uh, there's capacity and congestion issues on a tower that T-Mobile's already on there. There are capacity, congestion issues and coverage issues in the commercial areas between six seventy-five and Highway one thirty-eight. And there are coverage issues for homes and commercial businesses between six seventy-five and Mount Zion Road. Uh, y'all probably familiar with this process, I don't want to belabor it. Uh, when T-Mobile, or when the, uh, an issue is identified, um, they establish a search ring, a search area where they look for, uh, towers on which they could co-locate or structures on which they could put an antenna. Um, here, in this situation, there were no other towers in the ring, in the search area anywhere. There are two other towers within a mile of this proposed site, but T-Mobile is already on those towers, on both those towers. So then they talk to potential landlords, um, they look at sites that can meet your zoning ordinance. Uh, and here, uh, they talked to two or three, uh, potential landlords. T-Mobile selected this site for a variety of reasons. It's at the Lord of Life Lutheran Church at thirty-two fifty Mount Zion Road. Uh, the, uh, Skyway is pleased to be able to partner with, with the church because that allows the church to receive the revenues from the tower. Uh, as opposed to putting it at a commercial site where maybe another business gets, gets the revenue. T-Mobile has, or Skyway will place this tower on the backside of the property at issue, uh, inside a wooded area. It'll be a hundred and twenty-five foot tall tower. Uh, and I have, I'd like to share with you some photo simulations, which will help me to address the condition that, uh, Commissioner Gregory mentioned. If I could step up or have one set for each.
Thank you.
Just give me all of them. Thank you.
Your ordinance requires that photo simulations be required and, or be provided. And so that, that's what we have here. And as you can see on the cover page where the, the, uh, green X is, is the tower location right in the center of the page. And then they float a balloon at that site, a weather balloon, at the height of the tower, the proposed height of the tower. And, uh, then they ta- they go around and take pictures at the various locations that are numbered here on the first page. And then on those pictures, they superimpose what the tower will look like. And as you can see here, um, I think in five of the seven views, the tower is not even visible. Now, the planning staff, uh, reviewed this application, recommended approval with, as a monopole, with no conditions, no issues. Uh, we attended the technical review committee meeting and no citizens turned out to ask about the tower at all. When we met with the ZAG, um, they recommended approval with a condition that the tower looked like a pine tree. And, you know, with all due respect to the ZAG, we, we asked that that condition not be imposed. First, you know, your ordinance has no guidelines in it for, for when a stealth condition could be imposed. And the ZAG didn't really give any reasons, they just said, we want it to look like a pine tree. As you can see from the photo simulations, the pole's not really visible from, from any of the, any of the surrounding locations except right in front, on the street in front of the church. Where it is visible, it's gonna be about thirty to forty feet above the tree line, which is required in order to propagate the signal out to the area. A tree condition is not going to make this tower look any less visible, it's not going to conceal it. And arguably, it even draws attention to it. I mean, I've driven around, we probably all have, and we see the pine tree towers and it, it's obvious what it is. No, nobody thinks it's a pine tree. And it's a, it's a hundred and twenty foot pine tree sticking up in the middle of a stand of, of eighty, eighty foot trees. You know, cell towers have become, the, the non-pine tree versions have, have become part of the landscape, frankly. They're like other utilities, they're like telephone poles, they're like high voltage transmission lines. And we don't require those structures to be disguised as pine trees or, or anything else. And I will just also add that imposition of this condition candidly may make it financially infeasible to construct the tower. A pine tree condition adds about fifty thousand dollars to the cost of construction of the tower. And if we're not able to build it, it's gonna hurt the community. Uh, the much needed capacity and coverage in the area for the citizens, we won't be able to provide. The church will feel the, the brunt of it because they're, they won't receive the rental revenue. With that, I'll just say, we respectfully request your, your consideration, your approval of the application without the pine tree condition imposed by the zoning advisory group. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Warner.
How many towers have y'all built in Gwinnett County that are not concealed? Or any other county outside of Clayton?
Um, I actually don't have that number, ma'am, I apologize, I don't know how many we've built in Gwinnett.
Okay. Or any other county, do they require them to be concealed in those areas?
Um, I think some, some counties have, have ordinances that have a stealth condition. I think, you know, it's, it's, I, I think that a, a pine tree condition is one that ought to be judiciously used. It, it's, I think it's probably overused. Um, people see, they say, well, there's a cell tower, we want it to look like a pine tree. Well, if it's gonna stand so high, you know, if it's gonna be high above the tree line, if it's not down in the trees, if it's not a tower that's covering maybe a gap in service around a curve in the road, um, that, that you can have it lower and kinda in the trees, where it actually does offer concealment, it actually does, does hide the tower somewhat effectively. I, I think that's an appropriate use of it, but, but when you have one like this, we have, I saw an example earlier tonight of a pine tree that was required in another jurisdiction, not in Georgia, but in North Carolina. And the tower was a hundred and ninety-nine feet tall and they required it to look like a pine tree. So it was, it was a hundred feet taller than anything else around it. And it, it really frankly looked, looked ridiculous. And, and we have, um, you know, a photograph here that you can see, this is a, an example of not unlike what this one would look like. I mean, you're gonna have a stand of trees that have, at a pretty uniform height and then you're gonna have a, a pine tree tower above it, which it doesn't conceal anything. And like I said, ar- arguably, that draws attention to it, to me, other than not just a regular monopole tower. I, I hope that answers your question, at least in part.
It does, sir, thank you.
Any other questions? Might ask again, if, if anybody's here in opposition or for this, uh, request that would like to speak, come forward, sir.
This is...
No, oh, where you want to speak to? It doesn't, or do you want to speak in for or? Okay, come on up, sir. Did you have something, you're with him, right? Come on up.
Thank you. My name is George Erhardt, I'm the pastor at Lord of Life Lutheran Church and I want to speak for it. I was gonna talk about the trees, but he, the lawyer took care of that. It's a heavily treed place, an area. And, um, and our property is probably, if you're looking at the pictures, over half trees. And it's the highest area and that's where the tower is going. But primarily, uh, for the well-being of, uh, Lord of Life Lutheran Church, it offers the opportunity to get funding for our diversity in ministry for Black and Hispanics. And, uh, and I think that's pretty important in, in this county. And, um, so I wanted to just speak, uh, for the tower, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, if you take the podium, please.
Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Frank Ayers, my residence is twenty-eight ninety-seven Kensington Way, Rex, Georgia. I am a member of the church council and I also want to speak to the acceptance of the tower. Uh, the, the tower, as it stands right now, will en- enhance our budget and help us sustain the, the church and the neighborhood. We are in the process of a transition of losing a pastor and ga- and gaining an open church. Therefore, we are really desperately in need of these finances. It's, sounds kinda greedy, but it's the truth. And, but we also want to maintain the church for the neighborhood and for the, uh, surrounding, uh, community. And that's basically my, my argument, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who would like to speak? Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, um, as I spoke to, um, Mr. Edward, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor yesterday, and he, you, you mentioned it was, um, a tower like this in your neighborhood, you know, with the Chris, not Christmas tree, but with the pine tree facade and so forth. And I told you, I'm, I'm still in favor of what ZAG recommended of doing that little pine tree, um, branches to take away just from the total industrial look and so forth. And I just, I, I just believe, um, that we, we've gotta start. I understand your feelings, I have no reason to, um, I'm in support of approval of the tower, but I do believe that if we can kinda camouflage this a little bit, it helps us in our goals, you know, of, um, setting the standard for the community when we do this. So with that, our promotion to, um, accept the... So, with that, I offer motion to, um, accept the petition with the ZAG recommendation, with the ZAG, um, c, conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
And the final zoning petition for this evening, the applicant is Lauren Clayton on behalf of Towercom Five LLC. Their request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a wireless te, telecommunications facility. The property is located at sixty-ninety Pine Grove Road, Riverdale, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff recommend approval. ZAG recommends approval with conditions. This is District Two, Commissioner Hamburg.
Is there anybody here in opposition to this request? Anyone who would want to speak in opposition? Okay, uh, ma'am, please proceed on.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Clayton, I'm an attorney with Wilson, Brock, and Erby. That address is two-eight-four-nine Paces Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-three-nine. I represent Towercom, and today we're seeking a conditional use permit to construct a telecommunications facility with a one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot monopole at sixty-ninety Pine Grove Road. With me today, I have Chip Bullock, he's the, uh, Senior Vice President of Telecom. I have Mark Robinett, he's the RF engineer for T-Mobile, and that is the company that will, we will be using as a service provider, among others, hopefully in the future. And also, Seen Massey, he's the T-Mobile representative, and they will be available to answer questions that I can't. The zoning for this property is light industrial. T-Mobile was the interested carrier, they identified a coverage gap, and if we could actually have the. You all can see this if I hold it up?
Yeah.
What you have in the first picture is the existing gap. These are, thank you, these are the existing towers. And the way they, they sort of, you know, radiate the coverage, we have a significant gap right here that's going to be addressed with the new pole. You see the dark green, that's indoor commercial. It's a little bit more difficult to see on here, but there's a, there's a lighter green all in here, and that covers indoor residential. Um, thank you, appreciate it.
Good job, Mr. Seawell.
The, uh, the tower, particularly at this height, will significantly close that gap. Then the most recent numbers that I found is that over seventy percent of people have cellular telephones, and believe it or not, uh, close to sixty or sixty-five percent now no longer have landlines. So, there is a public safety interest in people being able to make phone calls from inside their homes. There was a couple who attended the CIM meeting, and they were concerned because they had some impression that the tower was going to be right in their backyard, which was incorrect, they were much further down the street. Once we discussed the coverage gap issue with them, we became clear they were sort of the target audience here, and they could not make telephone calls inside their house. So, they were kind of excited about the prospect of being able to do that. On the nearest side of the, the east side of the property is the only residential on either side of it. And that's going to be the Wood Sage Development, and that's going to be over here. Um, and it's, it's well outside the, the setback requirement for that. So, um, we have provided in the packet photographs of the view from various places. Do you, do you have those? Have you seen them, Commissioner Hamburg? Okay. We're pleased with the professionalism, courtesy, and ultimate outcome of the approval from the planning and zoning staff, Ms. Smith and, um, Lenise Lyons and Tyler, they're very helpful, I just wanted to point that out. They recommended without conditions. When we appeared before the zoning advisory group, their ultimate recommendation of approval imposed the condition of a reduction in tower height to one-sixty. I believe that part of that may have been influenced by the presence of opposition. He was a gentleman that we looked into further down Pine Grove Road. He owns a few rental properties. He made some claims about diminished property value, which actually I've got multiple studies that indicate that over time, that, that's not an issue, that cell towers do not diminish property value. One of his properties is vacant, there are no tenants in it. And the other two are so far from the tower, we're talking about fourteen-hundred-and-forty feet and fifteen-hundred-and-fifty-three feet away. So, there would be no visibility issue for this gentleman.
What's your name again?
I'm sorry?
What, what's your name again?
Lauren Clayton.
Okay. Ms. Clayton, will you show the first, um, board that you have?
With the coverage gap?
Yes. Will you point out to us where, uh, Highway eighty-five is?
Highway eighty-five is going to be running down.
I think that's the red, I think.
Is that eighty-five?
I think that's it. Is that it?
No.
That's not it?
That's not it.
Hold on. I can find that for you.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I just want to show it to the other Commissioners.
This gentleman also referenced a nearby school. Um, and actually, the, the, the board chair sort of dispelled him of that because of, so, over two miles away. And he did, of course, also indicate he was concerned about the radio frequency exposure. There were several questions asked by the zoning advisory group. Federal law actually preempts the ability for a local municipality to make a decision based on those environmental concerns. But there are several studies out there that indicate that the radio frequency from a cell tower is far, far, far less significant than other everyday items, and it poses no health risk. As for the reduction in tower height, I just want to make a couple of points.
That, that's fine, I believe, um, that, uh, our zoning administrator and I have discussed the height and all, so, if we don't, if you want to ask for any opposition.
Did anyone have any concerns about the?
Right.
The reason we're asking for the, uh, one-eighty-five height is for co-location feasibility, which comports with the, the county ordinance that we want to not have a proliferation of towers. And so, if we can carry up to five carriers on the tower, which we can with the one-eighty-five, then we would avoid that and stay in accordance with the intent of the code.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Clayton? All right, uh, once again, is there anybody here in opposition to this request? Commissioner Hamburg.
Okay, and Kimberly, if you would give us the recommendation.
Um, in reference to zoning petition, Lauren Clayton, CUP-dash-seventeen-dash-zero-seven-thirty-four, um, staff has recommended approval with no conditions.
Okay. I offer a motion to, um, accept the, um, recommendation of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you all have a good evening.
You too. All right, I think that concludes our agenda items. Uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
On litigation? So, move.
Uh, second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone have a good evening. Those in favor, aye? Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
Uh, we're, I'm asking, uh, the board approve the, um, settlement agreement between the county and Alan Smithwick on terms of reinstatement of employment effective Monday, October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, uh, along with back pay in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven, sorry, two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents, which is the gross amount of pay he would have earned between the termination date and his reinstatement date, as well as leave and leave accrual hours, as stated here in the settlement agreement.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions, statements, comments? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Oh, wait.
I, I just want to say, we have got to align all of our departments disciplinary actions back up to HR so we can stop doing this at some point, going and doing back pay on people. I understand why, but.
Because of the High Court says otherwise.
Didn't the court tell us to do this?
Yeah, but the, but my point is, we have, we need to have ourselves aligned so that we can limit our liability of having to come back and pay out.
Any other comment, statements? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.